I'd like to appoint Dave Funny Ole as a voting member on this hearing.
You need a second?
No, you don't.
Okay.
I can just do that. All right, so where are we? We're supposed to start. A few minutes ago.
Move, move to open the Michael J. Gray public hearing.
Second.
Polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So we're open for business. We don't have a clerk. So let me see if I can find the legal notice here.
Do we have to reread it if we're continuing the hearing?
No, you don't.
Okay.
I don't have to read. Okay.
No, it's a continuation from November 30.
Continuation. All right. So we've already read the notice. Great. So we were waiting the receipt of some materials.
Yep. You had the Board of Health update at the last meeting. The plans had been submitted, but they hadn't yet been reviewed by the Board of Health. They have since been, and there is an approval document in your folders, which does indicate that it's in compliance.
Right. I read that. Did you? Did everybody get a chance to read that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That looks all good.
All right. The other thing was the plan was a bit sketchy, so I think we have a better plan at this point.
We have architectural plan. Yep. The drawings.
Right. So has everybody had a chance to review those? I mean, we should look at that. Look at the square footage.
Right.
Issue.
Yeah, that was calculated by the building commissioner at 700, what it was?
Seven, 720?
720, yeah. Was that right? Yeah.
720 is what I got for the addition. The plan said the existing structure was 1592. I can't read. They're like, when you zoom in, I can't read their dimensions, but if you take the 1592, then, you know, go with it. Is that what, is that what you got, Beth?
I'm looking, I'm looking for what the building commissioner did. I haven't looked at this since the last hearing.
Yeah, it's 1532 on the.
Oh, 1532?
32. Yeah, if I'm going by, it says living area, which is both the new addition and the, the new addition and the old existing. Yeah.
1532 plus 720. So the total would be 2252. 720 divided by 2252. So it's 31.97%. So 32%. What's our percentage? That we have?
.35. Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five is the max percentage, but with the 800 square foot criteria in, we're probably never going to get to that again.
You won't be surprised. It's a little ranch.
I will be surprised.
It looks like it's under the 800, it's under the 35%. So dimensionally, we're good. And that's, we have plans to show that. So those were the two things missing, but I'll bring this up. I read a public comment. Looks like a neighbor who's not in favor of this. I meant to drive by, but I didn't get a chance to. So I'm a little concerned about that. If, or is there anything to be concerned about?
Right.
Point of order, may I ask? That letter was a new submittal since the first public hearing session, so I didn't know if you wanted to read it or reference it, or how you wanted to put it in the record, or?
It's probably a good idea.
Just a reference, or, okay.
You want me to read it?
Since it's new, maybe it's a good idea.
All right, let me just get back to.
Yeah, they, they had trouble getting connected at the last hearing, so they sent it a letter.
All right, so this is, it's dated 12/1 of last year. From Robert and Melinda Zito of 87 Pierce Road. And it says, "Board members, we are the homeowners abutting the property requesting approval for an accessory apartment at 75 Pierce Road. We've been living at the adjacent lots since April 1987, when the surrounding lots were undeveloped. We were attracted to the area for its natural beauty and sparsely populated properties. Much of the surrounding ends of our life management area, including a section across the street from our properties. There is a naturally occurring retention pond across the street with a culvert that allows water to flow under the road. And this pond is certainly within 100 feet of both our properties. The water is directed toward a path about 100 feet from the back of our house where a shed is located. At times, there is significant water accumulation on the path in front of the shed. The spring brings an elevated water table, and the lawn near the flow of water becomes soggy. At times, diverted water overflows onto our back lawn. When we purchased our home, a French drain was installed along the side of the foundation to keep water from the basement. Later, after the property next door was developed, cracks and water developed in the basement floor due to hydrostatic pressure. The existing home that is applying for the apartment is located at the highest point on Pierce Road, and the proposed addition is planned to be built into the downward slope towards our property. The proposal nearly doubles the footprint of the existing structure and will have a negative effect on the view. We have concerns that runoff from the addition may further exasperate our water issues. In addition, the property is located in an area zone for single-family occupancy, and granting a variance to construct an apartment is out of character and not in the best interest of the neighborhood. We do not support approval of the application." Okay, so that's in the record. Yeah, I did get a chance to drive out there today, and the, as far as their view is concerned, this place is, is on top of a, I don't know, it's got to be at least 50, maybe 40 feet higher than their, their properties, something like that, I guess. That's, it's quite a steep slope, and so putting this addition on towards their, their property is going to, it's not really going to make a huge difference in the visible mass of the this, the structure. I mean, it'll cut down on site distance a little bit. But I guess my only concern is, what, what are we, how are we going to stabilize this slope? Because it's only going to get worse. Planning the, you know, from the drawing, it looks like they're continuing the, the existent, existing basement floor out underneath this, this addition, which will put it, I would guess roughly 10 foot above the, the existing grade at this point. So you're going to have some really high slopes where I don't know how you're going to stabilize those and stuff like that, so.
Isn't that something for like the, the highway department to kind of look into because of water runoff?
Not really. The highway department wouldn't care because it's not a road. This is a structure and a.
Yeah, but it's going to redirect water into the road, wouldn't it? Or is it?
I, I don't know if it'll be redirecting a lot of water. I mean, there'll be, basically, it'll be, the roof will be draining to the front and back of the structure instead of, you know, uniformly on the side of this hill. But, you know, I don't, I don't think the actual amount of water is going to change at all. So. And the thing about, the thing about water with single-family homes is, you know, we don't have regulations other than, Beth says there's a, there's a stormwater issue if you disturb more than 1,000 square feet of, of a lot, I guess. And I assume that applies to a, a single-family home as well as, yeah. See, if it was a subdivision, then you have to do the drainage calculation showing that the amount of water leaving the property is not any different from the amount of water entering the property. And, and if, if it is, then you have to, you know, do retention basins and stuff to compensate for that. But, but for a single family, it's not generally a problem. But, but certainly for the stability of the, given that there is, I would say a drainage ditch at least if it's not a vernal or intermittent stream. But it's, it's close to the Butters property. I don't know if it, it'll probably be less than 100 feet from the, the finished addition. So there, there might be an issue with conservation on this, but, but there's certainly a structural issue of how, how do you stabilize? Well, you know, the whole thing doesn't just wash down into the valley.
What is the?
Observation.
What do this, what do the side yard setbacks look like, Bill, of the neighbor and this, the applicant?
Say again?
From the side yard that they would share. What's the side yard setbacks approximately?
For the existing house, it's, it's got to be maybe 120 feet or so. So it's, it's a pretty good setback, you know, given that they're adjacent lots. I assume they're adjacent lots. There isn't a, a paper.
Yeah.
And I don't know why they skipped all these numbers, because to go from 75 to 87 for adjacent lots, that's, that's a little.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
If there is a septic plan submitted, but it doesn't have contours on it, and it's only for 75 Pierce, there's no other information on that.
Yeah, it goes out back, I think, right?
Yeah, I can screen share it if you want, but it doesn't have contours, so it won't show you where drainage and, and slopes are. It's just the septic plan.
Yeah, I, I looked at that. Let me see if I can find it again.
Want me to screen share it?
Yeah, why don't you? Then everybody can see it.
Okay, who would like to screen share?
Beth Jackson.
Beth, okay, stand by.
Thanks.
You got it.
I wonder if the, as a lot of curiosity statement, but I wonder if the building inspector is aware of the elevation? Is there any kind of a question on an application? That, you know, he looks at sides and setbacks and all that good stuff, but what, what about elevation?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I know, you know, for earth removal, I think the, the biggest slopes we allow are four to one. Isn't that right? I can't remember. And then septic systems allow a different slope. I think it's only two to one on a septic system. But if you go above four to one, you're going to have to use riprap or something to, to, you know, keep, keep things from washing away.
Maybe, maybe this is a situation where it doesn't sound like it's really in our purview. Especially here, this, if, if this gentleman wanted to build an addition for like a family room or something, that wouldn't even come to us. That would just be building department. So it's the use here that we're pretty much dealing with. I would think that the, the Butters should probably visit the building inspector and probably let him know what the concern is. And maybe during construction, those, the four to one slope and all that stuff takes all that into consideration. I don't know.
It shows the, it shows the, what do you call it? Hang on, I'll have to download this because I can't figure out how to, oh, I can't download it because it's not on my screen. It shows, oh, Beth, look at the, the septic plan shows the side yard setback. Oh, it's only 86.7, or is it 86 feet? Oh, from the addition, yeah, okay.
From the proposed addition, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I was saying about a buck twenty from the existing house, so.
Yeah, so there's 30 feet, 24 by 30.
Okay. Hey, man. I could be an engineer.
Oh, the side yard setback with the proposed addition is 86.7 feet after it's built.
Yeah. So then that, that wash is, is definitely, it's within, it's within 100 feet of that, of that wash. So probably conservation does have some jurisdiction in spite of what they say.
Well, I did talk to the conservation administrator, and they are outside of 100-foot buffer of the wetlands. I just asked today, based on, on your, on the letter.
Has she been out to look at this, do you know?
Yes, but it is hard to see, as you can tell. So that drainage ditch that, you know, they're being, they're referring to, I, I don't think that's jurisdictional. Or she would have said so, you know, conservation would have found that out when they did the referral.
So not, not a resource area, is what she's saying, man. Even though it fills up with water. Okay, that could be too small. Hey, I don't know.
Yeah. They did the mandatory referral back in November, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, all right. I have another concern for this project. And if we find, our findings all come in and we make a motion to grant the special permit, I do, I think I'd like a condition on there. This is going to have a full basement underneath. And I, to me, every time we see that, that is for future use to be finished. I would like to make a condition that that basement shall remain unfinished and not become any additional living area. I don't know if that covers that or not, but.
That sounds legit.
Yeah.
We've done that before.
Remember Copper Smith? Let's not go there.
Please.
Now, we're talking about living area for the apartment or the main house?
For the apartment, yeah.
All right, so if the, if the, the occupants of the, if they wanted to make it part, like a big, big basement that connected with the main house and is considered main house, would that be limited, or?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter whether the two basements are connected or not. I mean, if, if it's a basement for real, then it's not a, it's not part of the accessory apartment.
Yeah, I, I'd like to specify that, that the basement addition shall remain unfinished.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no, no cracks and workarounds that.
Anybody else have any observations, questions, based on what we've got?
Pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah.
I don't want to, you know, write off the neighbor's concern, but I just don't think it's in our purview really, so.
Right, and I, and like I said, visually, it's not going to be a huge change for them.
Which is in our, in our findings, okay.
Is there anybody else on the, on the, you know, on the call here that wants to say anything?
Any members of the public? Or the applicant?
I don't see any hands raised.
Anyone?
All right, so we have to go through the, let me get the codes and regulations. So what do I want? The residential districts or the accessory apartments for the health?
I think you want the special permit 14565. Where we go through A, B, C, D. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, we, we go through that, but we've got to go through the accessory apartment part.
Okay.
Accessory apartments. Okay. Let me just look at this. Okay, here it is. So the, so we have a report from the Board of Health in accordance with 14536C. We've got that. And then, where is it? We've talked about the accessory apartment in a single family dwelling, having the lesser of 800 square feet or 35% of the floor area of principal residence and apartment combined. So we're, we're okay with that. The third item is adequate provision has been made for the disposal of sewage waste and drainage of such, accessory apartment in accordance with the requirements of the Board of Health. So we've got the Board of Health report, basically. Adequate provision have been made for ingress and egress to the outside. I didn't look at that. Did anybody look at that?
Yeah, it looks like they, it connects to the existing structure. That looks like a stairway on the side and one to the basement.
Okay. So then we have to find that the constructions and occupancy will not be detrimental to the neighborhood in which the lot is located. The lot on which the structures are located contains at least three quarters of an acre. Adequate provisions have been made for off-street parking of motor vehicles. Seem like they have parking. And there's no other apartment on the lot. Okay. All right, so what, that, that's it for the accessory apartment. So somebody want to make a motion on our findings for the accessory apartment section? 14536.
I don't remember doing that before. I move that the proposed project, I'm sorry, I don't know the word. Vicki, help me.
Compliant, is compliant?
With Section 145-36 of the zoning bylaw.
Second.
Work.
All right, polling the members. Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Funny Ole?
You're muted, Dave.
Yes.
And is that everybody? Did I get you, Vicki?
You did.
Okay, I'll vote yes to the motion carries. All right, so now on to the.
Did you call me?
I did. You were, you were the first one.
Jeez.
I know it was a long time ago, Darlene.
I was so excited about making the motion.
Really? Okay, so we've got that accessory apartment. We got to go back to the special permits. Oh, jeez. That's no good.
A is adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed uses. More than three quarters of an acre, right?
Yeah.
It's got to be a big lot because the septic system is quite a ways from the house in the back.
Do we, do we have it on, how, how big is the lot?
It's like three acres, if I remember, from the application.
I have, oh, sorry, is it?
Like three, three something, I think.
I'm, I'm sure it's fine. Suitability of the site for the proposed use, residential use of a residential site. Impact on traffic flow and safety.
No impact.
I don't, I don't see a huge impact. I mean.
It's a single bedroom.
I think that's a very dangerous road because I was out there cruising up and down there. Somebody could come through there going at a high rate of speed, and that would have been done. But anyway. Impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. I think we'll, we'll have a slight impact, but it's not a huge impact. Acquacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. I'd say, except for stabilizing that slope, I don't see any issues. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. That's all brand-new utilities out there, right? I mean, there was nobody there for years, so should be fine.
Yeah.
Impact on ground and surface water quality and other environmental, natural resource considerations. Again, stabilizing the slope will be important to keep, you know, sediment out of, out of that non-resource area. And, okay, so then we've got that.
So then I move that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalances beneficial effects in either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
Well done. Second.
Polling the members. Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Funny Ole?
Before I vote, do we need to include a sunset provision on this?
Well, we haven't, we haven't done the conditions. We haven't done the conditions yet anyway, so.
Okay. I vote yes then. On the current motion.
All right, and I'll vote yes as well, so the, the motion carries. So now we need a motion for the special permit and whatever conditions we're going to put on it.
I move to grant a special permit for an accessory apartment to Michael J. Gray at 85 Pierce.
75.
75 Pierce Road. Thank you. Okay, there we go. With the following conditions. That the basement to be built under that accessory apartment shall not be finished.
Into living space.
Right. Yeah, shall be, remain unheated, unfinished, and not become living space.
Completely comprehensive. I like that.
Yeah, and that the permit will sunset upon transfer of ownership. And also that Bill can sign the decision for the rest of us. That'd be a separate motion.
All right, polling the members. Darlene?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Funny Ole?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. So we have 14 days to file the decision. You can always bring Beth coffee and cookies, and she might be quicker than that.
This will go quickly, yeah.
In the meantime, And, uh, in the meantime, um, uh, you, you'll get a, um, a letter from the town. You'll get a copy of the decision in the mail showing the town clerk's stamp, and that's, that's the date of, uh, filing, and there's a 20-day appeal period, so after 20 days, do we send that letter out with our?
I send them a letter. I'll send them a letter with the, um, signed decision and a, and a, a a copy of the decision sits in the town clerk's office for 20 days, and at the end of that 20 days, um, it's up to the applicant to come and collect that letter, and it will be a true test copy, which they can then record.
Right. You've got a letter from the town clerk certifying that no appeals have been filed, and you take that, plus you have to record this decision at Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. Um, with those two items, you can go to the building inspector and they'll put you on the, uh, whatever their current cycle for issuing builder permits is. So anyway, uh, that should do it. Anything else? All right. Uh, so we had, we had some stuff we needed to, did we have minutes to talk about, or?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Um, I actually, I only put one set on the agenda, but there are actually two sets, my error. There's actually a set from November 2nd that was not approved yet, and then there's a set from November 30th that was not. Uh, so both of them were not approved. If you can do them both tonight, fine. If not, I'll just put them on the next agenda.
So I don't see a thing except, are they under the preliminaries, or?
Yes, yeah, so there's, yeah, there's two sets.
For this, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so 11:02 draft minutes. Now those, were those corrected a couple of times?
Yeah, yeah, the correction, I, I looked it over and saw the corrections that I suggested.
Okay. All right.
I got a couple of suggested corrections.
For that one?
Yeah, for the 11:02.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the name of one of the people voting that night was spelled incorrectly the second time. Funnyoli.
Uh-oh, I tried so hard. I see it. Let me see. Um, yeah, you're right. I swapped the O and the I.
Yep. And the second one is, is it appears that the word "none" was intended, but it spelled N-O-N.
Where?
Same section.
Oh, mm-hmm.
Get it.
One, one point two. It says "none received."
Oh, "non-received," yeah.
Thank you, yep, yep.
Missing E, wow, jeez, this is a regular group read.
Yeah, yes.
I think Beth's doing that on purpose to see who's reading these.
I wouldn't put it past her.
That's all I, that's all I had for corrections.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I move to approve the November 2nd, uh, meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Uh, polling the members. Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Um, Sean?
Yes.
Uh, Dave?
Yes.
And although yes, okay, the motion carries. So then we're on to,
November 30th.
11:30.
I took the Zoom link off.
What is it?
The Zoom link. I took the Zoom link off. I remember, you remember, you said, you need to take the Zoom link off.
Oh, yeah, right.
I, I got it.
Yeah, because there's nothing like a, what they call a, uh, dead, dead link, you know, 404, item not found. We don't want to be guilty of, of a basic, uh, internet faux pas.
Got it.
All right, so this was the Dog Grooming Establishment. All right, has, has Dave Chanel given you any feedback on this puppy?
I don't believe so.
It's long.
If, yeah, so it was a couple of public hearings, so.
Right.
Yeah, everything that's in the decision is in the minutes, um, or the Dog Grooming Establishment.
Why do we put that much in there? Can't we just say, instead of having A, B, C, D, E in there, couldn't we do something like the board reviewed the, um, the criteria and
Yep.
found in favor and issued the decision?
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like if-
Well, I mean, now Darlene, you've got, you have to have the, um,
Findings?
The, uh, motions and the votes. So anybody that makes a motion should, has to be in the minutes.
Right, but you have to get a motion to accept the findings of fact, but do you have to actually list all the findings of fact in everything we said? It just seems like a lot more than-
I don't know.
I would think so because if there's a discrepancy at all in the decision, I mean, if the applicant reviews the decision and sees a discrepancy, you can go back to the minutes.
Uh, I think it's okay, Darlene. I don't think it's too verbose. I mean, if we had, you know, Fred said, um, he had a stomach ache or something in there, that would be verbose, I'd say. But, but you have to have the, the motions and the votes. And the motion, was there, did we do a motion to accept the finding of facts? Yes. And I don't think it hurts to have the finding of facts, especially if you just copy and then paste them from the decision. It's not like it's a lot of work. All right, is there a motion on this puppy?
I move to approve the November 30th meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, polling the members. Darlene?
Yes.
Vicky?
I wasn't there, so I don't think I can approve, right?
Uh, probably not.
Yep.
Sean?
I wasn't there either.
You weren't there either? Dave, were you there?
I hope I was, yes.
And I was there. Okay, so the three of us, uh, are enough to approve minutes, so the motion, uh, carries. All right, what else?
Great, uh, I'm going to go quickly to the agenda. We can move pretty quickly.
There are a couple of, of, of Planning Board mandatory referrals, but are they obsolete at this point?
Well, um, no, so I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to, um, review the applications and make comments, but both of them, one of them is the Harbor Trace PFAS Water Plant, Water Treatment Plant. That is a stormwater management permit application, and it is, um, going to be under technical peer review. So that one is pretty straightforward. I, I just, I wanted the board to make sure that they do get, they do get an opportunity to comment, so that's why it's in there. The second one is a site plan review and major stormwater management permit. That is for, um, the project of Five Turnpike Road, and it is for repaving and redesign of the parking lot and installation of a stormwater management infrastructure. And there will be, uh, 26 new parking spaces created, but the same amount of impervious surface, so, um, it's going to be a redesign, making it a one-way and cleaning it up and, and that. So I don't know if the board has any comments with regards to that, or if we were able to review that, but that, you know, they're both open for, the public hearing is open for 25 Harbor Trace and continued, and the public hearing for Five Turnpike Road opens on the 23rd, so there's plenty of opportunity to comment if the board would like to.
No, I, I, I think in terms of Harbor Trace, um, is, if conservation's happy, I, I don't see why we would have anything to say about it. It's a, it's a, it's part of the well, uh, well-field, um, improvements.
I don't have any comments.
This turn, Five Turnpike Road, I'm not clear, is that the, the Spalding School, or is that some other?
Those are the condos.
Country Estates, Country Estates condominium, yeah, the big parking area.
Okay.
That sounds like it would be the same, Bill. Conservation is all over that because it's pretty close to the area of the Squonacook River in the area, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anybody's going to say anything about that, it'll be Conservation.
Yeah.
It's a non-issue.
Okay, what's Wheeler Road?
Uh, Wheeler Road, um, I just wanted to update the board that they, as they, they did have their, um, earth excavation permit transferred to the new owner, Gary Shepherd. They, they just completed the transfer of the associated stormwater management permit for the, that, that was issued concurrently with the earth excavation permit. That's been also renewed and it's been, I'm sorry, extended for two years, and a new permit's been issued in Gary Shepherd's name, so I put that in there so you could see that.
So we haven't, we, he hasn't come to us for a new, uh, earth removal permit, right?
Not yet. Um, that earth removal permit, uh, isn't due to expire for, I think it's another year, and then he'll be back. But the stormwater permit was only good for two years.
Yeah. Wow, all right. Uh, and then 227 Mason Road update, what's, what's that?
Yeah, I just want the, the board know that the planning board on Monday night did, uh, grant a site plan review special permit for that project, and I just put the draft decision in your folders if you wanted to take a look.
Great.
But, um, as soon as that goes on appeal, he'll be done with his permitting process. He's already gone to Board of Health and the whole bet, so I just wanted to update the board because you were part of that, and I-
Right, all right, thank you. And then the ZBA Annual Report, I haven't had a chance to look at, but I will take a look at that.
I read it and I have a question.
Okay, well, I'm sure you do it because I went pretty quickly through it.
What does this mean? There's a sentence, um, after it says who the members are. It says, "Dave Chanel, in addition to his other responsibilities, continues to provide support to the zoning Board of Appeals Administrator and Staff."
He reviews, he reviews, um, all of the decisions, pretty much, and he does it just, just as a check for me, and that's what I meant by writing that. He supports the administrative staff by, you know, if I ask him a question or any decision, pretty much goes through him. That is also his role as the clerk. Um, but I just wanted to give him a special comment there because he's been doing that for years and he's fantastic. Every time I ask him, he's like, boom.
No, he's good, thank you.
Yeah, and it's very helpful with that when there's no land use coordinator, the department head is absent again. Uh, so we, we appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, that looks okay. I like it. Fine, okay, ship it.
Okay, and if anyone wants to extrapolate on anything, they certainly can.
And then the bu, the budget, is that just, uh, for humor, or?
Yeah, for your entertainment. It is what it is. It's a level budget, um, so, and then they, my, my part of the budget, my compensation is, uh, negotiated, I guess, through whatever union and all that, so I think that's all set. It's just there for FYI.
That's funny because I, I, I opened it up and it's, it gives me an Excel sheet, but there's no data.
It should have all of the land use budgets in there. I put them all in, yeah.
They'll go to the bottom and click on the different tabs.
Yeah, the tabs on the bottom. You'll see land use, conservation, planning, ZBA, it's all there. That was drafted by the previous land use coordinator before he left. Oh, that's, that's getting submitted.
All right. Land used expense. All right.
That's all you get paid, Beth?
What's that?
That is all you get paid?
Okay, uh, well, that works, it works. But that, that, um-
Oh, it's five hours a week.
Yeah, it's like what she does for, uh, for ZBA, and then she's got other-
It's never five hours for the ZBA, but that's the way it's set up, so it's, it's fine, yeah. It's, it's always, it's a, it's been a busy year, so a lot of my time has been, you know, working the special permits, and so it works out great the way they have it structured.
Okay. Zoning expense, we don't, oh, we, we, that's great. Zero, zero expenses and we've got a divide by zero error Excel. It's not happy. There's a $600 item somewhere here, floating, floating under zoning expense. All right. Well, that, that is, that's a good laugh, thank you. Anything else, Beth?
So the other thing I wanted to mention, I did put the decision in the folder from 478 Main Street, and I'd also like to add that the code was updated today to include the Candace bylaw. So if you look in the e-code, look up under 14526B9, you will see Dog Grooming Establishment, uh, that, so that's a good thing. Um, and then again, uh, there has been two new applications received. Um, one came in today for an administrative appeal, and so I wanted to know if the board wanted to do some scheduling before you log off tonight. So there is one for an accessory apartment that is, you know, pretty new. I'd say the mandatory referrals haven't even gone out yet, so I'm going to say that one should be at least four weeks. The administrative appeal, I would probably do them both on the same night, you know, um, even though I don't have to do, you know, we don't do referral comments for an appeal. I think that we need time to publish and notify butters.
Well, you have less time too. You only have 75 days to make a decision on an appeal, so.
Yeah, so did you want to look at a month or, you know, for the next?
A month sounds good.
All right, so that would put us at February, um, 8th?
Yeah.
Bye.
Does that work for people?
I just double-checked.
There's a cons-con meeting that night at 7 o'clock.
Oh, that's right. That's short of a month in case.
Um, the first and the 15th are wide open.
Yeah, I could do the 15th too.
Me too.
Can we do it later than 5:30 though? It's kind of tough on me.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. 5:30 is wicked early in my opinion, but why don't we go to-
I made the comment because the February 1st and February 15th, there's nothing else booked yet.
Okay, all right.
I like the early, then we can do other stuff after.
Those good shows on TV. So the 15th at what time?
6 o'clock maybe? Does that work for you, Sean, or is that too close?
Let's try 6 o'clock, we'll see. It might be on my, it might be on my phone and have a bunch of paperwork in front of me sitting in somewhere.
Okay.
All right, good.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Been real, and Happy New Year, I forgot to say that.
Yeah.
Happy New Year.
And town meeting on the 24th.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
We need a quorum. Like I said, we can get a temporary liquor license and then we'll get people showing up and doing stuff.
Quorum, quorum, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, take care.